All right. I'm calling the meeting at the Castro Valley Unified School District to order. We, the next item is to approve the agenda.
It's amended.
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Mike, your vote?
Yes.
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 And I will also vote yes, so the agenda is approved. Are there any requests for public? All right, then. Okay, we are reconvening to open session. Welcome to our board meeting. My name is Dot Theodore. My pronouns are she/her, and I have the honor of being the board president. Let's see. We did not take any action in closed session. The next item is the mission statement. Trustee Howard.
We work together to provide safe, challenging, innovative, and culturally responsible, responsive, excuse me, learning environments to ensure that all our students feel respected and supported to achieve their unique academic potential and explore their individual talents.
Thank you. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must complete a request to speak form or via the Google form at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment/ and submit it prior to the start of the agenda item. At the discretion of the board president, the speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will either come to the podium to speak or be unmuted during your turn and be allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will be then re muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. To comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment but can neither discuss nor take action on the issues presented. The next item is score report and recognitions.
We're very excited to have our CV Adult and Career Education Program presenting tonight. Director Beth Cutter is here with his, her team and our student, so welcome.
Thank you so much. It's great to be here, and I always take a lot of pleasure in getting to present about what we're doing here at the adult school. And I feel like I was just here, or that we were just here. And I did a lot of the talking in our last couple of board presentations, so I'm especially excited tonight because we'll have at least one, but hopefully two of our staff members sharing a lot about what they do. So I look forward to getting us started and then passing it off to them. So the document up here is one that looks very familiar, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I'm happy to share that our programs are off to just a really wonderful start for the school year. For me, it, you know, each year since I've been here, since I started in July of 2020, has been pretty special, in air quotes. So certainly, joining during the pandemic was a unique time to join such an amazing school, and I feel like this year in particular, it really has the feel and energy of the campus that I was expecting to join, and it's just been a really, really lovely start of the school year. So our core programs, Adult Diploma, GED, English as a Second Language, our career education classes, our Strides program, all of that is up and running. And I invite all of you to come and visit us at any time if you want to check out what's happening at our campus. We do have a few things that are new. We do really embrace innovation in adult education. We, I think, have the fortunate ability to be able to pivot quickly when we see need. And so a few things that I want to highlight just briefly, the Strides Cafe, this one's not a new thing, but just to make sure that you all know, and even members of the public that are listening, on our upper campus, we have a cafe that is ran by our Adults with Disabilities Program. The structure this year with our classes is a little bit different. It's not open as many hours as in the past, but it is open right now Wednesday and Thursday mornings. Our paid internship program, which you all have heard about, is up and running. We have interns at The Marketplace and at Don Jose's Restaurant, and they're off to a great start. In our ESL program, we've expanded on our partnership with Chabot College, so we've started supporting a second certificate program with ESL support, and that's in early childhood education. We have a cohort of students that are getting ESL language support from our teacher, who are also enrolled as Chabot students completing a four-credit certificate. The other thing, and much gratitude and appreciation to the staff at Stanton, so the principal Gina and Vanita Lee from the Wellness Center there, and of course, Dr. Ryman for his support, that we're partnering to provide a family English class, so getting that started with families there that'll be during the school day so that families don't need to find additional childcare while their kids are in school. Career education, we have ECG, EKG, starting up as an add-on to our medical academy. And then lastly, just to note, we are in a WASC accreditation cycle, just wrapping up our sixth year, and our visit is scheduled for March of 2023, so we have a lot of activity underway there with our self-study. And timing is everything. So the main focus of our presentation tonight is the two branches of our support services at CVACE. We have a lot to be proud of here because the kinds of services you're about to hear about from our two staff members make us unique among adult schools in the region, not just in terms of the outcomes that we're able to achieve, which are really standout, but even just having some of the services for our adult students that I'm happy to share with you. So these are things that we're really, really proud of. So the first branch is our Launch Program, which is our transition program, and the staff member or teammate that really takes the lead in that is Lynette Escobar, and I will hand it over to her.
Hi. So this is a poster that I show students when I'm talking about my services, and I think we've all felt like this person at one point or another, and always wished there was somebody, I don't know, like tax time, I just want somebody to sit next to me and help walk me through things, and that's kind of what I do for our students. So whether it's what's next, how do I get money for college, what job is right for me, how long do I need to go to school? We have students who come from other countries with college degrees, do they need a GED? These are big questions that could set people back many years if they don't get the right advice, and what's a resume. So these are the kinds of things that I work on in my job. Luckily, I'm not teaching on Zoom anymore, so I got rusty. So here's some data on last year, how many students we served one-on-one support. And so 65 total, about half received support in college, whether it was figuring out if they need to go to college, looking at different college, actually doing the application, applying for financial aid. If any of you have kids, you know, it's really complicated, and if you are barely getting your GED or you're coming from another country, it's hard. It's hard for us that are native speakers, so I sit down and help with that. We also do, I have some great software to help you figure out what you might want to do next, and how long it will take you to do that, and how much money can you make, which is important to our adults. We also help people do resumes. I'm doing a lot of resumes right now, so. In addition, we do our special events to reach more people. So last year, we got to have some in-person events, which was great. So you can see our job fair on the left. That's one of our ESL students getting his blood pressure taken by one of our clinical medical assisting students, so it's a win-win everywhere. And then to the right is our job fair. You'll see Dustin there representing the school district, and I have plenty of students who apply to be Paris, so I walk them through Edjoin, also not an easy application, so we help funnel people too. We had five CMA students walk out of that job fair with job offers, so it was a big success. I also, as part of Launch, teach a class called Get Focused, Stay Focused. It's a college and career planning curriculum where you make a 10-year plan for your life. So you'll see this great artist here, Katarina, and you may have seen her on the Castro Valley Art Walk. She's been showing there, and part of her 10-year plan was to start giving art lessons, which she's doing, so she took the class last year. And then I also brought this vision board that a student did two weeks ago. We started the class three weeks ago, and I always do this vision board to kind of start and think about what your life is going to be. And gosh, it was taking so long. I'm like, come on, you guys, let's go, move on to the next thing. And this young woman from Afghanistan was like, teacher, I have never had the chance in Afghanistan to sit down and envision my future and cut out magazines, and she was so excited. I'm like, okay, fine, just take some magazines home. So she came back, and this is now hanging on our classroom wall, which I think is great, giving people the room to think about their life. And it's emotional. People cry in that class all the time. I cry, thinking about myself in 10 years. So I think numbers are great, but numbers, none of us are here for numbers, we're here for the people behind the numbers. So I just brought you some examples. One student not pictured, because I know she doesn't want to be pictured, is another student from Afghanistan. She came last August when the Taliban, when the US pulled out of Afghanistan. Her mom died a few months later, unfortunately, here in the US. She's, I think, 20, had studied to be a lawyer, and she just wanted a job in the US, so she applied to Ross. She didn't care back from Ross. I said, okay, let's sit down, let's apply to TJ Maxx. So we applied, but then she went home and she applied to Ross again. Now she knew how to apply for a job, and she's working at Ross, and I think that's really great. So that's one student. Then there's Aima with a little heart there. They give me these pictures, so they're very colorful. She's a mom with five kids, and we're one of the only adult schools taking advantage of the concurrent enrollment, which is that, a law that says if you are in pursuing your GED or your high school diploma, you can also take classes for free at the community college. So she just recently finished her English class at Chabot. That gives her triple credits towards her diploma, and she's just really proud of herself for having done that. And then Violetta in the middle, I met her last week, she did not look like that, so she sent me a very glam-dead photo, and she's taking our community health worker class to train for a new career. And she came in going, I don't have much job experience. Well, she's been a caretaker for her family for most of her life. She has amazing experience that is applicable to becoming a community health worker. So it took that time to just kind of sit down and sort it all out and put together a beautiful resume. I think she's going to have a great career. And then you're going to hear, or have you heard, I'm sorry, can you, not yet, you're going to hear about our Student of the Year Award, Eddie, who just got a job with a wastewater treatment plant, and he had a tough time finding a job because of the pandemic, so he came and we just practiced interviewing, and again, looking for, sometimes students don't see what they've already done that's applicable to their future jobs. So I just wanted you to meet some of the people behind the numbers, and we're here to help our students go on to college, career, whatever it is. Thank you.
And then our next presenter is Alina Manuela Tett, who is our school counselor.
I'm not sure if I would like to share a little bit about my story and validate everything about Lynette's job as an immigrant that moved here and had to figure out paperwork, language, career, and then go back to school, figure out financial aid and all that. But I think I'm going to take my role as a school counselor and present a little bit about my job, which I'm very proud of, and I think the arrow to the side. Thank you. So this is, we have named our school counseling program Unicorn Program because it has been so difficult to find another adult school that offers counseling services to students. And please believe me, I've asked. This summer, I've been to the National Conference of School Counselors, and every board member that I had access to, I just went and I asked, do you have this in your district? Oh, we have adult schools, do you have counsel? So I did not get a positive response yet. I will probably attempt again next year, maybe, maybe we're inspiring others too. We are doing student services presentations at the beginning of every year and at the beginning of every program because we want to define what is school-based counseling? What does it look like? Who has access to it? And two things that are very important for me to get across is addressing the stigma around mental health services. We have many, many students that are coming from different cultural backgrounds, where talking about your personal stuff is very inappropriate in public or with someone else. How can you open up that's just for family? So addressing that has been one of my missions, and the other one is normalizing mental health support. When we have a medical illness, we go to our medical and get our medical support. When we have a mental health issue, a challenge, we feel overwhelmed, we feel stressed, we are going to our mental health support person. And I've been trying to get that across and facilitate that for our students. At our school, we offer group and individual sessions, we do classroom presentations, check-in, and community resource access. Our service, counseling services are offered in person and through telehealth, and at the beginning, I think 70% of the time was geared towards adults with disabilities, but as the news went out that we have a school counselor, a lot of students started self-referring. Therefore, you could see there, self-referral is 42% of the number of students I see every year. So therefore, we support all departments. We present our services to all departments, and everyone is welcome. And this increases access for low-income students. We start with six initial sessions, and if there's need for continuation, I have a list of agencies that our students can continue receiving mental health support, emotional support, in a place where, you know, it provides sliding scale fee. Right. During the pandemic, grief was the number one reason, I see nods, everybody understands, for students to come into my office. This year, as things have opened, I'm seeing so much stress, so much anxiety, and problems with time management. So these are some of the things that I'm seeing currently. They were present in the past, but minimal. Something else that we offer are resource referrals, and both Lynette, she has a wonderful website with great, great resources. I have a list of resources as well, and we address everything from basic needs to mental health support, to immigration support, to everything for, how do we call it? I want to call it abuse, but that, trauma of every kind, LGBTQ, bereavement, all kinds of resources that we have access to, we let our students know they can access because we recognize life gets tough, they don't have to go through it alone, and we are very proud of that. Unfortunately, I cannot share images of the students I serve for confidentiality and privacy reasons. I'm trying to avoid liability here. But we have, I have had the experience of having students come in, they were facing, I get emotional thinking about it, one student came in asking for support in order to support a family member that was just diagnosed with cancer going through chemotherapy. Another person came in, she lost her son. Another life transition that we got to work through was a pregnancy. So life throws things at us, and I feel so privileged to be there and support our students, and I'm proud to say that those students have graduated from their programs, and I think that makes us, that's what makes us a unicorn program. I'm going to stick to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
We will ask questions after trustee Howard presents a recognition.
Our student isn't here, so we have a.
So the governance team, along with Castro Valley Adult and Career Education, are proud to honor Eddie Trong. Unfortunately, as Beth just said, Eddie's not here tonight, but he was a student in the wastewater treatment plant operations program at CVACE in 2020 and 2021. Eddie impressed his teachers and other school staff with his work ethic, commitment to achieve his goals, his positive attitude, and relationships with other students. During the pandemic, many students had difficulty being able to start work in their new field, but Eddie didn't give up. He was able to get a job in a related field, sampling and analyzing water samples, and increasing his understanding of government standards. In early 2022, Eddie saw an email from the CVAC Launch Program that we just heard about about support available to practice interview skills, and he came in for one-to-one help. Since then, he has started the CVAC externship program and is externing at the San Leandro Water Treatment Plant. Eddie exemplifies the perseverance, hard work, and resourcefulness that we're proud to honor. Congratulations, Eddie. Your hard work is paying off on your career. The governance team joins Castro Valley Adult and Career Education in honoring Eddie Trong as an outstanding student. Congratulations, Eddie.
There's a little video from him.
Hi, my name is Eddie Trong. I am a former student of the Wastewater Treatment Plant Operator Operations Training Program. Took the class in 2020 and finished and graduated in 2021. Reason why I got into this program, because I'm familiar with the industry. It is a very, very stable and rewarding career if you put your time and effort into it. I like that the industry entails, like environmental science with the school, has really helped me out a lot. They are very, very supportive. I'm very excited about starting into the industry right away because this is what I want to do, so have a, kind of have a knowledge about what the wastewater industry entails. Yeah, I'd like to thank the school district and school board for providing this opportunity. Like, as well, I'd like to thank Carrie, Leanne, and Lynette. They have been very, very supportive, answered my emails and whatnot. Lynette with the interview, that helped a lot, as well as my, both my instructor, Ugly and Lori, they've been very, very helpful. Yeah, so I'd like to start my career on this new adventure, so hopefully looking forward to that. Thank you.
All right, board comments. You want to start us off, Clinton?
I just wanted to say, I think it's great how you mentioned that you're one of the only adult schools that has access to counseling. I know the high school especially is really, really focused on wellness and counseling. We have a Wellness Center that was actually just built a few years ago, so we're really, really focused on that, and it's so great to hear that that's continued into the adult school as well and throughout the district.
When you presented last year and talked about wastewater treatment plant operations, I was like, wow, that's so specific. Thank you for bringing back an example of someone who's gone through that program and seeing the impact on his life, and also thank you for normalizing mental health, right? Talking about caring for mental health, and I can imagine interculturally how the, how there are different thoughts and beliefs about that. So I think sometimes we pay lip service to it in this country, and thank you for persisting and creating a safe space for that.
You know, I think I say this every time that you guys come here, and that is, I'm always amazed at how broad your program is and how many different kinds of students are and are benefited by the adult school, so thanks very much for that. I have a series of just like bullet points here. I'm really glad the Strides Program is back. I'm pretty sure that I saw one of your students down at The Marketplace the other day. I think it's great that you're opening an outpost at Stanton to teach ESL. I think that's a huge step forward, and I liked seeing Eddie there. The wastewater program still is one of my favorite things over there. I mean, those are, you know, those, there's just nobody to take those jobs, and they pay a lot of money, so this is, it's a fantastic thing to get into, and I think that it's great that CVACE is doing that. The counseling in your school, I mean, I think that's terrific. I mean, you have a lot of different counseling programs up there. I think there are some other ones with the special needs students that you've had for some years that were really valuable. And finally, I just think that, you know, the adult school is just another safety net for us here to get students to get a diploma, and you know, that's what we're trying to do. We have other means, you know, of doing that. We have Redwood and, or getting a good career option at ROP, but you guys are a key part of that and just another important element where, I don't know what we would do without you, so thanks very much for coming down here and giving us a great report again. Thanks, Beth.
Yes, so CVACE, really wonderful school and program. When I was teaching at Redwood, sometimes we would have kids who, by the end of the year, had not graduated, and we'd refer them to the adult school. And we'd refer them to the adult school to finish up. And I would always like or check, you know, back to see if they did indeed graduate. And it was always so happy when they, they did because that was, you know, the next place they could go to get that high school diploma. As you know, I'm visiting tomorrow. I can't wait to see Strides Cafe. That's going to be really fun. And I'm super, super happy to, about the, both the launch transition because I know kids I've had always do need help in trying to figure out how to write a resume. They think they don't have anything to put on there. You have to give them ideas about what they could put on there from their life, volunteer work, family work and stuff they've done. So it sounds like you're, you know, you're doing a great job there. And then the school counselor all around the district, we are trying to support students. You know, we just had the unveiling of the Wellness Center plaque yesterday for mental health. And now I'm so glad to see that also at CVACE that there is counseling and mental health support for the students there as well. No matter your age, you need counseling. Some people need counseling sometimes, even if you're 18 and up. Thank all of you so much. Oh, and to Eddie, who graduated from that program and now has a career. Yeah. Thank you.
There's so much that's already been said, so I won't keep saying the same things over and over again. What I love is, in addition to everything that was said, is you serve a very diverse community that helps lift people up no matter where they at, are at, and what they've faced. And it takes a lot of passion and dedication to do so. And you provide wraparound services, connections. You help lift people up. So I just want to thank you for everything that you do to lift others up and help our community.
Yeah, I've got a whole page, so I won't repeat, but there's so much. I just want to say, I think what I've noticed about CVACE, it's everything they do is asset-based. Like you said, you know, who, all of the things that you do in your life that you're not even thinking about applying, it actually is. So it's awesome. As you were describing what you do with the counseling and just kind of, what you're doing is simplifying life. And as you were talking, I'm like, oh, my gosh, wouldn't it be awesome if every one of our high school students had access to that kind of thing? Like, how do I apply for this? How do I get a job? How do I do my checkbook? They've asked, so that is something I really want to talk to you about. Yeah, because, I know. But the thing is, I think a lot of times people think of it's academic counseling, but life counseling. It's like, what do I do next? And that's what's really, really exciting. But just, you know how much I love CVACE. It is absolutely unique. No other school, adult school is like it because of the kind of people who we have working there. So thank you, thank you so much.
And I'll, I'll wrap up by saying ditto to everything that my colleagues here have said. And I always talk about how our adult school is such a treasure in our community. And it's because of your passion and dedication. So thank you very much. Ms. Cutter, would you like to introduce any staff that's here?
Sure, yeah. So we have Keith Naumann, who's one of our assistant principals who's here. And he works really closely with the Strides Program and Diploma in GED. And Megan Eberle, who works most closely with our ESL and Community Interest and Marketing. And then, of course, Lynette Escobar and Alina Manuela Tett, who you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a student board member report. Quentin, take it away.
I've got a pretty long report today. I had the chance to meet with Creekside's principal about two weeks ago, and she updated me on some of the stuff that's happening at Creekside. Number one, and I really want to emphasize this, sixth graders are going to outdoor school this year, which is the first time since everything shut down before COVID. Only one group got to go. And then literally days before, these sixth graders who had been waiting for this for the whole year were about to go, it got shut down. So it's really great to hear that they're going back. Creekside's really focused, focusing on mental health. And they have a brand new wellness center, actually, at Creekside, which I got to take a look at. And it's, it's very great to, again, see that the district is really focused on wellness and the adult school, high school, and, and the middle school level. I think that's really great. Their Zombie-thon is happening on October 28th from three to five. And yeah, this is something that's kind of funny. There's a dunk tank for teachers, which is like, teachers are sitting up there and students get to dunk their teachers in a, in a dunk tank, which I thought was really interesting. And I mean, talk about commitment from teachers, right? They also have an ethnic studies class option for sixth and eighth graders, which I thought was cool. The football field and track are entirely renovated, and it looked very nice. The baseball field is also renovated, and it's scheduled to be completed in November. And also Creekside's Leadership Class is having a recycled art contest. Only recyclable materials like glue, paints, and tape are allowed, and the top five winners get to receive a prize. At CVE, this month, they're finishing up their Penny Wars fundraiser. It's a fundraiser where students bring in pennies, cash, and checks to gain positive points for their class. Chabot is also doing a fundraiser that's similar. Their Rock and Roll to School Event happened. And something I thought was funny, they have a walking school bus, as they call it, where basically a bunch of students meet at Owl's Market and they all walk together to school, which is very cool. It just promotes safety, and it's, it's a fun thing that the community gets to look forward to. They have a Halloween costume swap where local families donate some old and some new costumes. And they provide these costumes to families that are in need and just allow families to swap out costumes for the Halloween season. And on top of that, they also have their Halloween Carnival, which is a night full of family fun, trick-or-treating, a photo booth, and delicious food vendor pumpkins and local heroes, which sounds like a lot of fun. At the high school, we had our blood drive today through the Stanford Blood Center. Students who donated got a coupon for a free pint of ice cream at Baskin Robbins, which is a pretty sweet deal. Homecoming Week is also next week. Our theme is Lights, Camera, Action. Students can dress up and show their spirit Monday through Thursday as well, and as well as participate in our Skit, Dance, and Float, which is put on for each class. And Friday is our big homecoming parade, which is coming back this year, where it will feature student-made floats that have been, like I said, built throughout the year, throughout the week by students. And also on Friday is our Homecoming Assembly. And the varsity football game is at 7:00 PM. Then on Saturday, the day after that, is the Homecoming Dance from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. That's all I got.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Lots of great things happening. So visited Chabot, Redwood High School, and Castro Valley Elementary. It's always wonderful to walk through classrooms. Yesterday, we were all at the Wellness Center to actually unveil the plaque. And I'm just, it's a wonderful thing to do. And, and it's great to be reminded how long it took to get there. And yesterday, we also had our District Student Leadership Alliance. Quentin was there as well as the, the other students. They have great questions all the time. They have great ideas, excellent input that they give us. You know, we talked about, we also use that group to talk about board policies that are coming up that have to do directly, that impact the kids in a, like graduation requirement, right? And it's great to share that with them and say, so what do you think? You know, the change, a couple of changes that, that will, you know, be considered hopefully by you. One is actually some sort of an, like internships and work experience during high school. And another one about graduation. But Ms. Eagles is always there to also listen to the students and encourage them to participate. For example, at the Equity Committee and different curriculum committees so that we do have the student voice. So it's just wonderful to have that. Just a couple of other things. There is something called California Kids Investment and Development Savings Program. So I know that our team here is sending information out and talking about that. But basically, if you remember, this is the, this was created to help provide greater access to higher education for California children and is a program designed to provide parents and guardians with a starting point for college. So it's like $500 a year that they deposit. So already, there is money for students who are low income in their account. So when, and this is one of the advantages of filling out the form or letting the district know. That's why I really appreciate what Ms. Chan has done with the Alternative Income Form so that they already have identified automatically there is money in those accounts. So we just have to let the parents know that they have it. And then it just keeps building. It starts in transitional kindergarten. So we'll send some information around that. Then just one other thing I wanted to talk about is how important it is that we are aware of bills that actually get passed by legislators. And then, of course, it goes to the governor. Like, as you know, the governor just vetoed the bill for full-day kindergarten and all of that because that would have been really difficult for school districts to do within the time limit that they had. So we're happy about that. There is some movement around teacher housing for places where they actually do have the meetings in the room. The Child Nutrition Bill, that actually requires child nutrition programs to purchase their materials and everything domestically. That was something that a lot of organizations actually pushed back against because it makes it more expensive. But so far, we'll see what he does. But also, there is something that we all are pushing for, and that is to waive the 180 days for people who retire to come back and work. Because if we're looking at not having enough teachers in the country, in California, all these districts saying, well, we need even substitutes. Well, if you have to wait for six months, if they could wait, they waived it during COVID, we're asking them to waive it again. So those are some of the things that we kind of just need to be aware of. And that's, that is all of my report.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is a three, a five-minute recess. So we can take a quick bio break and come. So we will come back together. Did either of them show up online? Mark or Hani? Okay, all right. So then we will move on to item nine, public comment. And we have one request to speak in person. Do we have any requests online? Okay, Mariabel Barera. You have three minutes.
And I'm not a public speaker, so my first time.
Me neither.
So yeah, my name is Mariabel, and I'm here to talk about the pride flag image that has been painted on our school walls. Images are able to grab our attention easily, and we are immediately drawn to that, right? Visuals quickly transmit information to our brain. They trigger emotions. They help us learn, and they help us remember. Because of the effects that an image may have, logos are used all the time, right? Through companies. And now we have a flag on our walls at school. A constant reminder to our children. And I feel that this is a problematic area. Without any further opinion from school families or communities, this student-led project was assigned and quickly put into place at the beginning of the school year. It was navigated swiftly as if any kind of resistance would have prevented such a move. You approved this project without considering some of the morals and values which are taught at home from a significant amount of families and community members from Castro Valley. Making this image a familiar sight to our children, suggesting that the information derived from it is good and condoned by all. And it's not. It simply is not. You've kind of broken into our homes by putting an image that you think is appropriate. The children on our campuses are exposed to the LGBTQ+ pride flag repeatedly, day after day. At my granddaughter's school, it's across the bathroom. So she passes through it all the time. It doesn't seem it's acceptance you are after, it's affirmation to this flag that you are after, correct? It is affirmation that we need to believe in this. Your staff and school personnel have said, we teach that all humans deserve kindness and respect. Of course. However, this is not the only message communicated with this image, the pride flag. That's not the only message, kindness and respect. Kindness and respect, I have images. The heart, the red, solid red heart, that's love, and it's a universal sign. But no, we chose to put. But no, we chose to put the flag. So this symbol stands for many things. I saw on your slideshow what all of the, well, we know what all these stand for, but also, well, I saw that, that's what you were.
Thank you, Ms. Valvera. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to the consent agenda.
I hope I was heard.
We're moving on to the consent agenda.
I'll move on. I'll move that we approve.
Thank you.
Consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Quentin, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so the consent agenda is approved 5-0. We will move on to reports, discussion, and action items.
All right. We'll get started. Dr. Reiman is going to take this first one. And I know that Ms. Shannon will chime in and we'll get to it.
Absolutely. So we're really excited to talk about the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Plan. The Expanded Learning Opportunity Program is a very special program, actually, that has been enshrined in California education code, and is now a requirement that helps us to expand our after-school, before-school, inter-session, and summer programs to service our unduplicated pupils. For those who don't know, our unduplicated pupils are low-income, our foster youth, and in this case, also our McKinney-Vento students as well. So these funds are used to help support after-school programs that were first piloted last spring, but since that time have been expanded. We're fortunate that we have an excellent partner in PlayCV, who has helped us to do that work at all of our elementary schools on through sixth grade at our middle school campuses. PlayCV allows us to have a singular partner that's working across the district, even though they're providing a breadth of exciting activities and resources. And so for this presentation, we'll be sharing some of the work that's happening, as well as the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program Plan, which must be approved by the school board at some point this year, hopefully tonight. And we'll also be hearing from Ms. Chan about some of the specifics in terms of the funding requirements. So without further review, we have a few amazing presenters that are going to be sharing with us today. I joked and said that she is my twin sister, but she actually is not, even though we appear somewhat alike. Amy Ramos on behalf of PlayCV. Justin Kemp, who is also here with PlayCV. You all know Nia Rashikci, who is our phenomenal director of elementary services, as well as Suzie Shan, our assistant superintendent of business services. So without further ado, Ms. Ramos.
Thank you, Jason. I am not quite there yet, but I'm getting there. So we are, ELOP is a portion of what PlayCV brings to schools. We actually provide services across TK through eighth grade currently. We, just a really quick reminder of what ELOP was set out to do. The funding is for after-school and summer school enrichment programs. The instructional day must have at least nine hours in for each of the students, at least 30 days during the summer break, nine hours of expanded learning opportunities, a nutritious snack, meal, or both. In the summertime, we do both. During the school year, we do the SNOCK. And the staff-to-student ratio for TK to K is a 10 to 1 and 20 to 1 for first through eighth grade. We have the planning components that we'll go through, that we hit in the plan are the safe and supportive environment, active and engaged learning, skill building, youth voice, healthy choices and behaviors, diversity, access and equity, quality staff, clear vision, mission, and purpose, collaborative partnerships, program management, additional, the transitional K in kindergarten, and any conclusions or questions people have. I'll go straight into it. I'll share the presentation, actually, with Justin. We are always ongoing doing staff training, putting things in place. We do some staff training where we do overlap with what the school has in place. We make sure that we're following all the school guidelines and rules. And then we also have training that we do on top of it as well. We like watch, we can track and watch attendance instantly. And we have text messaging and phone capabilities inside of our app, with a two-way back-and-forth communication. And then we are currently working on enhancements within that system as well to make it even more efficient. We do warm handoffs for the youngest students, the TK and K. It's always a warm handoff. We do ID checks for pickup until folks know exactly who it is that's picking up. Every school is asked to continue it until they recognize that person. And then if anybody new is sent, verify, and we will sit and wait for someone to add somebody to the pickup list. And that can take a while sometimes, but it's the right thing to do. We maintain the approved pickup list and guardian list. We follow the safety protocols, and we offer language support. We have three phone lines currently. We have English, Spanish, whatever phone line that handles both Mandarin and Cantonese. Danielle handles our Spanish line for us, actually. Thanks for coming. Active and engaged learning. We try to hire expert-led enrichment classes, visual arts, science, public speaking, coding, theater arts, journalism. We're still bringing in all those programs. We do plan when we bring a class to a school that it does transfer through to each one of the schools on the grade levels. So we make sure if we're going to hire somebody who can only handle three classes, we keep them going down each one of the sessions. Enrichment is designed to supplement the day and introduce new topics of interest. We do homework and schoolwork support. That includes missing assignments, tracking down assignments, emails to teachers, and holding the kids responsible for what their assignments are. And we do engage with the families and teachers, if necessary, to make sure we're following up on needs. Some of our teachers who work with the school will bring homework with them that kids have claimed is missing. So we have it coming to us, so it's great. We do family engagement events, art shows, movie premieres. Play is coming up in Q3. 10 out of 11 schools this time are going to participate. It's great news. We collaborate with school administration, and we survey students and families for interests. Our skill building are about the classes and activities. They're grouped by age level, and we are learning a little bit about how to group them best. So we will make changes if we see it necessary, always willing to do that for sure. Programs are, they're motivating and engaging. When kids are really engaged and interested and they stay, if it's a subject matter they tried and didn't like it, we're willing to take a look at it and move them around. Not everything is meant for everyone. Our journalism and comic book art, short film, they all build skills. Girl in Class does print papers and sends it out. It's news for kids, by kids. Great topics like volleyball, something like that. It's pretty fun. And a lot of it is about reading and storytelling, doing the fact-checking and interviewing. Kids have a lot of fun in that class. Our coding, personal finance, and engineering classes build a lot of computational skills. In a personal finance last week, we learned about compounding interest, how it works for you and against you. And we had a lot of kids deciding not to do student loans and start saving now. So we, it was a really good class. It was really interesting. The public speaking debate, improv, theater and arts, and music build confidence and communication skills. Our soccer, yoga, and movement classes build strength, balance, and endurance, and as well as coordination. And we do a class that does playground games. They bring the rules and the games back to the school day. We just recently purchased a bunch of pennies so they can do team sports. And we'll be going into the middle schools with four different special events during the day that will cover and actually supply all the needs for. We're going to do yoga, we're going to do volleyball, a bike, bike skills to learn how to change tires and things like that, thanks to Billy Bradford. And we will be doing a DJ and then soccer. So we'll try to bring those during the lunch hours for those middle school students. We have classes that help build and support social and interpersonal skills through teamwork, cooperation, and time management. I mean, a lot of SEL planning is in the works right now. Youth voice and leadership. Many offered classes allow students to sample the subjects, and most don't get, they don't really get to experience them outside college. We have some playful music classes and in-depth studies into art and art history. And we have, student input is always critical when we design these, and students develop leadership skills in group projects and activities. A lot of the presentations they end up doing in there. And we have our healthy choices and behaviors. We have classes about medical kids. We have cooking classes coming in, test at Canyon. And it provides age-appropriate materials. They learn how to read food labels, how to prepare healthy meals for themselves, how to prepare both cooked meals and non-cooked and nutritious snacks. We also have movement and mindfulness classes. We have stress management, yoga. Programs are designed to minimize screen time and benefit the mental, physical health. We do allow them to do their homework that is on their computers, and they do get free choice at some point during the day, but we try to minimize the screen time as much as possible. And Homework Club helps to free up evenings for families to do all their extracurricular activities. Our diversity, access, and equity, which is really, really important to me, the ELOP program provides equitable access to some of our most vulnerable students. We take it very serious. And all of the information is protected, so all the kids that are in our program come on the same level. Everybody comes to the program as a student who's in the program. And it's really important that, to me, that we keep it that way. Everybody is welcome and feels comfortable. We aim to remove the barriers that block students from these opportunities, are providing translating materials, adhering to the nondiscrimination policies, taking every possible step to provide accommodations to ensure students can benefit. And this, personally, we've, we've taken to a very serious level, because I think a lot of people are left out, whether it's by mistake or not. So we take a very large step and effort, make sure we're having proper conversations and providing what we need to. ACV actively recruits team members that reflect the diverse communities we serve, and we're culturally sensitive. Students' experiences, knowledges, and backgrounds are taken into account when planning and implementing all of our programs.
I'll hand it over to Justin, and then I'll come back for questions.
Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about quality staff. One of the things is, you know, we're always looking, as Amy just mentioned, diversity is something that is really important to us. And so we apply that when we're looking out for all of our staff members. Quality educators are obviously extremely important to all of our student success. Obviously, we follow all of the CVUSD qualifications and requirements. All of our team members go through background checks, go through mandated reporter training, go through PlayCV orientation before they start. We, in our, first and foremost, reach out to staff members that are already on sites, such as teachers, both current and retired paraprofessionals. We found that if we can bring those, those people in, and we provide a continuity between the in-school day and the after-school program, that helps the students out quite a bit. For example, Amy mentioned that Danielle is our Spanish translator, but she also teaches Spanish class on three, sometimes four sites each week. In addition to that, during our recruitment efforts, we are seeking people that we believe fit in well with our culture of collaboration, communication, adaptability, and empathy. Those are all, all of these are really important to us. We're also attempting to implement a culture of continuously learning and continuous improvement all the time, looking to see what we can do differently, what we can improve on. Our clear vision, mission. PlayCV, taking a step backwards, PlayCV started out as a program to bring after-school enrichment classes to each of our sites with the goal of bringing those to all Castro Valley students. Every school site has a success story of a program that, you know, either families like, really liked, or worked really well for them. What PlayCV attempts to do, what Amy's vision is, is to take a collective buying power and bring those programs to all of the sites. And so that's where, that's at the heart of everything that PlayCV does and where it's got it to start. Enrichment is our main goal. When we're, you know, had the opportunity to speak to a lot of families during walk-through registrations at various sites, a lot of questions about after-school care. And one of the things that, for me, really differentiate, differentiates PlayCV from other programs is that we're not focused on daycare, we're focused on enrichment. Everything we do is about enrichment. So we're trying to bring programs that possibly could help students make up anything they might have missed during the pandemic, anything that can foster either team or individual growth, supplement what they're already learning during the day, and probably more importantly, give them an opportunity to test out subjects that they may never have gotten an opportunity to. Most people don't get an opportunity to outside of college. One thing to make clear in terms of like mission and purpose at PlayCV, when we talk to families about PlayCV, it's, it's really two separate programs that are connected. The first, at its, like I said, at the start, it's the enrichment classes that meet weekly, usually one hour a week in either nine or 10-week blocks. So the year is broken up into sessions, and then the summer camp program. And Amy mentioned some of the classes that we've been able to bring, art, science, book club, coding, robotics, Spanish, French, journalism, short film, music, cooking, personal finance, public speaking, debate. And I know there's, there's more that I've already forgotten about. Aside from the enrichment classes program is the full play program, which is our daily after-school from the last bell up until 6:00 PM. And the full play, while it does also include enrichment classes, it also brings other activities, opportunities for social, emotional learning, opportunities to let students maybe play with inside friend groups that they wouldn't have had normally in their school day, homework support, as Amy mentioned. All of this wouldn't be possible without the support of our community and the partnerships that we've been able to form. We've have an ongoing relationship and conversations with many families, community leaders, district leaders, third-party providers, and students, to make sure that we always keep that focus on enrichment. We look to take advantage of our local community's strengths and weaknesses wherever possible. And some examples of that is, like Amy mentioned, is our other showcase events, like the picture show in our movie premiere night, that our short film class students got to enjoy. We've also had art shows for the art students, and Play is coming up this year. Program management. ACV is attempting to remain as flexible and accommodating as possible. So the result of that is what actually looks like a fairly flat organization, meaning that, you know, we, Amy says this to a lot of people that we're interviewing, that we're all one big team, and there isn't like anything that, you know, one of us wouldn't be willing to do that somebody else might be willing to do. From a leadership standpoint, there's the executive director, Amy, myself, and one other associate director, but it would be not uncommon to find us onsite, working alongside with our other teachers and instructors with our students. We have a set of full-play instructors that are typically there Monday through Friday on each site, but we also have a set of people, team members, that we can easily move from one site to another, depending on enrollment changes, or which way the wind is blowing, you know, that particular day. And those teams, you know, wherever, whatever site they're on, we all have a consistent and common goal, safety, obviously, first, and then providing, you know, intentional enrichment program for the kids. And then we also have our enrichment class teachers, who we support, give them tools to design a class that works typically in nine or 10-week blocks, that they then teach at two, three, four, five sites each week. And then with those, you know, four sessions that we have throughout the year, those classes rotate, so where we might have a coding class at Proctor one session, it'll move to Jensen Ranch the next session, so that every site has the, has the same access to all the classes. And then we also have our language classes, like Spanish, that we designed to run the entire year. We were fortunate to be able to find enough Spanish instructors to be able to do all of the elementary schools, and then a French instructor to be able to do both of the middle And then our, we have a pretty robust TK and Kinder program. These are a very special group of people who almost all work Monday through Friday. We have a TK program on five sites, two of those that have an AM/PM class. So, and there are some cases where our instructors are with these. So and there are some cases where our instructors are with these kids longer than their regular teacher. And we coordinate as much as we can with site teams, with district leadership, to design, and amongst each other, to design a curriculum for those students that supplements what they're already doing. Curriculum would have tenants of early childhood education, include literacy enrichment. We, as a team, meet in person bi-weekly to go through the next two-week plan, discuss some of the success stories and challenges that we might have had with, you know, individual programs or individual students. And then we're providing professional development for all those team members to support that program as much as possible. And then here's just a couple of the comments that we've gotten back from clients, you know, family members. And we've gotten many more that have been, you know, either in-person or over the phone. The huge successes are the homework support, the classes, you know, a couple of people very happy for the fact that we are there even on minimum days, so that, you know, that we have a solution for those. And then I think I am handing it off to Suti. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
First, the budget. As you know, the ELOP funding is included in the 2022-23 budget. It was actually, it started last year, so we did receive funding. But this year, it's especially important because the governor actually funded this. It's a full funding now. So he, this was his plan. His plan originally was to fund this over a three-to-four-year period, but he actually did that in one year, which is this year, which is great. So that's why it's up to $4 billion. Really, it demonstrates the commitment that the governor really, you know, just really focusing on comprehensive before-and-after-school program, including summer school. The funding for school districts, it varies. So there are two different things here that you see, the bullet points. Unduplicated pupil percentage, or UPPs, is what we always say. For 75% or higher districts, if their unduplicated pupil percentage is 75% or higher, they get 2,750 per student. For districts like us, we're below 75%, so we get 1,250 per student. And then there are fiscal state requirements, and so a few of these you've heard. So it is subject to audit. We have, this is not this year, not the current year, it's actually, it starts in 2324. And the reason for that is because when this came up, a lot of districts that don't have the ACES program really did not know how to put this together, right? So this really allows, state is allowing districts, including us, to really look at maybe, you know, piloting, which is what we did last year. We started with, you know, five, three sites, and then we expanded to five last year, and then, of course, then this year, we have all of our elementary schools and as well as the two middle schools. So it is subject to audit in 2324, and so penalties will be for not meeting the minimum time requirements, which is what you heard about, you know, at least nine hours per day throughout the school year, as well as 30 days, 30 days, nine hours, at least nine hours. So that's 210 days. And it must be offered to unduplicated students in grades TK to six and provide access to those who request it. And of course, then the plan is included in the packet for your approval tonight. And then once you approve the plan, it will be posted on the website. And then this is a, you know, a plan that we need to review on an ongoing basis, that makes sure that we're following the minimum program requirements and reviewing them as far as content and also outcome measures. So this is not the only time that you're going to see. This is, we will be bringing it back to you so we can give you, update you on the progress of the program.
And so I have the pleasure of having the last couple of slides. And I just want to say that probably Justin and Amy are being really, the work that has gone into making this program, a comprehensive, aligned, collaborative, fun after-school enrichment program, has been a lot of work. The PlayCV staff, Castro Valley Unified School District staff have worked really closely together to make sure that we're providing a program that we can really be proud of. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, there's been a lot of hours, a lot of time, a lot of discussion, a lot of work, a lot of hard thinking about how to make sure that we are serving our students well. So, and there's a lot more work to do. So as far as next steps are concerned, these four we thought we would share with you. We're always thinking about, we've only really done one kind of big type of outreach at the very beginning of the school year with registration. And so we're out to do, you know, additional community outreach to our stakeholders to make sure that everybody really knows about this program and about the variety and diversity of the programs that are available, and that our students can participate. All of our students can participate in some way or another. Again, continuing to hire quality staff, as both Justin and Amy shared, we're always out to, they're always looking for quality staff to hire, and starting with looking internally, and then if we can't find folks that are internal, going outside in our community. And then additional training, we, Amy and Justin do a lot of training with their staff. We will be co-training some staff when it comes to our SEL and our Abar work. We want to make sure that we're aligned in that work, we continue to be aligned in that work. And then last but not least, we're always looking for new quality partners. You know, some of our PTAs have said, hey, you know, can we have yes for test? Can we have, you know, can we, and yeah, absolutely. Justin and Amy have been amazing at incorporating those into our umbrella, PlayCV being our umbrella organization, and all of those organizations coming under those, so that we again have comprehensive, aligned services to serve all of our students. So those are our next steps. We say bright futures are made here in our after-school program, and I think we're ready for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions?
I have a few questions and comments. One thing I appreciated about the pandemic was, like, within a week, my kids suddenly were not going to childcare anymore. And, you know, two years later, we're in middle school. And I've been thinking about the impacts of the pandemic and wondering if this meets a need for something more than childcare, right? And wondering what type of impacts you've seen in some of the students coming through there, and just how maybe enrichment is maybe the, what we need right now. So I'm just kind of post-pandemic-ish in the state we are. How is this meeting sort of that need? And what are you seeing with sort of?
Quickly. We don't, definitely wouldn't talk about specific students, but we do see a large number of kids more closely tied to not having open dialogue and conversations or making friends, not understanding some of the rules of playground games, not having had team sports, things like that. So we do a lot of how to make a friend, how to talk to a friend, how to meet a new person, do a lot of interactions where we're going outside, seeing the sun, taking walks, doing things that are active, and a lot of things of downtime, getting off a device, and having conversations about, you know, other things in the world. The classes are bonding kids on a lot of different levels. We had a coding class that I was in the other day. They coded how to move to the right when you see the blue stripe, move to the left when you see the tan stripe, and the robot stayed on the line. And some, one of the kids in the back said, this is how Tesla works. And then like 10 kids came on on the project, and then everybody wanted to go back and make their Tesla. So it was, the coding class ran a bit long, but those are the moments that you want them to run login. And the partners that we have are okay with it, and they stayed for an extra 45 minutes with the kids to make sure they all understood how that worked. So those are the light bulbs that you see coming on in larger groups. I think, you know, the pandemic isn't something anybody who could plan through how it was going to come out, but I think some of these things are giving an opening of a window where some parents might not have time to take them to that extra class, because they're at work at that moment. I'm going to give them an opportunity and an option to pick the class that they would like them to try and see how their kid likes it. So I think it's a wonderful thing that we can do it for all the programs at the same time. Everybody will get that opportunity and that option, and the parents get to check something out, and so do the kids. So we're seeing a lot of really positive results from some of the classes, are really excited about it. We see kids playing chess at lunch where they didn't before, and just, people meet their people, right? They find something in common and they find new friends, so it's pretty special. I've lost a couple of chess games. And for the record, we did not get $4 billion. People have asked that. That is for the state. That is not for PlayCV. So just to clarify that, that is state funding.
I think actually, adding to that, it is really important for everyone to understand that what we PlayCV is for the students who qualify. We just pay for the students to be served. So, and the funding, when you think about it, it's $6 a day is all the, if all of our students took advantage of it. But there is really a lot of effort to make sure more people know, because this is three hours after school or before school. And so.
I can just appreciate with how childcare really shifted, how this could be seen as not just childcare, but something else, right? I was really impressed in the plan. I appreciated how it laid out the day of a TK student, right? Because that's talking about meeting a need of a family, particularly students that we want in a TK program, and really outlining that entire day. I am curious about curriculum development, right? So it's not school, it's not childcare, but it's enrichment. So how does that work? And how does that evolve over time?
So we hired a director as a master's in TK through fifth, or K through fifth, in early childhood education. And she's currently working on mirroring some of the items that are in school, but making them all hands-on. So we do have a component where we do actually have some worksheets. They're not required to be done, but it is teaching the kids about sitting down, it's time to sit down, it's time to fill out a worksheet, it's time to kind of get through something if you're interested. Some kids jam through them, really love them, some kids don't want to do them. We do have hands-on. They do a lot of manipulation with Play-Doh and clay and do their letters in all kinds of designs and ways. And today I was sent to butterfly hands, and there's always some sort of a craft that's going on, yeah, this way. And so I think what we're doing is making sure that we're staying in line with what state standards are, but we're making it fun. A lot of comments we do hear from the parents are, my kid wants to go to PlayCV. And I think it's because what we're doing, it's the fun part, right? It's the crafts, it's the coloring, it's the, you know, it's the creative side, so they're having a blast with that.
Thank you.
Yep, and that's a meeting we do every two weeks. We bring all our TK and K folks in together, ask our curriculum, talk how it's done, give them all the supplies, and turn it on.
Gary, you have a question?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. And that is, I think this is really an amazing program. It's way better than I ever thought it would be. So I think it's amazing that you started it from nothing, you and your team. So, and I did have the pleasure of meeting the teacher you just mentioned the other day down at the marketplace. And I think that's really, it's just another facet of it that's, as I say, way beyond anything that I thought you'd ever be able to do. So this is just such a huge addition to the district's outreach to the students and the benefits that we can give them and everything. So thanks so much for doing this, all of you that are both in the district and in PlayCV that have made this work. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Sally?
I want to thank you too for making a good program that has enrichment for the children. I'd like to, if it's possible, maybe come see one or two of the programs and see what you do there. That would be really, you know, rather than on paper, sort of really watch and see the kids. Okay, thank you.
This is an action item. Can I make an action?
Yes.
I would like to move approval of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan.
I'll second it.
All right, there are more comments.
I could wait till after, but I just want to kudos to all of the work, but I don't want to repeat myself, but I have, everybody, but I have to say, like Ms. Rishichi said, this is thousands of hours put into this. Because imagine this kind of program, if we had to have 15 different organizations work with us, it is not possible. This is actually a part of our whole day for school. So the collaboration has been amazing, and I think we'll continue to have more students involved who can take advantage of it. This is like a dream come true. It's like one of those things that the state of California did many years back for only some schools, and now it's open to all of us. And some schools that have ACES and 21st Century, they've had it for many, many years, but it doesn't, none of it looks like this at all. And I'm just so proud of the work that has gone into this. Thank you so much for everything.
It's a wonderful partnership. Thank you.
Two ways, right? It takes both of us to want to make something happen. I appreciate all the efforts, and there's been hundreds of thousands of questions going back and forth, but they're worth it, right? Because, you know, we have to make sure that what we're doing, we're doing it right, and planning intentionally, so.
Thank you.
And changing things when needed.
Yeah. Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, so this has been approved, 5-0. All right, item B, supporting families through community partnerships.
Yes, Mr. McMaster is going to come up. But see, we just talked about, when we talked about wraparound services, you heard from adult school, wraparound services, depends on where the need is. You just heard from, about our ELOP, our after-school program, and now you're going to hear about how we actually support our families in another way, so.
In a much more succinct, brief presentation. I did not prepare as much as the previous. But I did want to say, I stopped in the hallway last spring because the articles that the students produced in PlayCV were up there, and they were amazing. I mean, it was like, it was the coolest thing, so, you know, it seemed sort of the fruits of the labor, and it's really awesome, that kind of project-based learning, so. Great work, but tough to follow up. So really want to focus on, this is kind of a snapshot of one example of what supportive families and through, specifically through community partnerships and with some staff infrastructure looks like. So this is not the entirety of all of our community partnerships or all of our family support, you know, projects or initiatives, but this is the one, this is a snapshot of one where we're focused on our families that are most at promise, most in need of resources. So I can't really tell the story without talking about one of the key roles in the process, specifically off of the district offices campus, if you want to call it that. It's our parent-community liaison. And so we have a new parent-community liaison this year, Ms. Tilsia Elaya, and I would like you to meet her. I would like her to tell you a little bit about the work she's already done this year, and then I'm probably going to follow up and tell you even more about her, because I think she's that awesome. So, Tilsia.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Tilsia Elaya, and I am the new family liaison. I am originally from Colombia. It's not easy for me to be here. I am originally from Colombia. I left my country 30 years ago. I moved to Europe, and I lived in Switzerland for 10 years. And after that, I moved to the US, and I've been living here for 20 years. I work for San Francisco Unified School District, and I also work for Mount Diablo Unified School District, supporting families, supporting Hispanic families. I've been here only for two months, and I am impressed with the group of people that I work. All of them are very professional, are very talented, and incredible working with them. I see that they are so willing to help families and the community and students too. I also have an overwhelming response from the Hispanic an overwhelming response from the Hispanic community. It's not because I'm doing like amazing things or sophisticated things. It's that Unified School District, I learned that that community, the Hispanic community, like that, they, they like that, I forget, the personal touch, the personal touch. And how I, how I do that, I call the phone, I call the families. I remember my second day here working in the district, and I asked for a list of Hispanic families with their phone number. And since that day, I've been calling families nonstop on a regular basis. And people are amazed that so many people are coming here to the district. And for me, the response is amazing. You know, it's not because the families, the families, the Hispanic families like that personal touch. And, and sometimes they don't, they don't check emails because they don't have a computer, because they are not computer savvy, because they work two or three jobs sometimes, single moms that cannot check their email, and also for because they don't speak the language. And, you know, for me, it's amazing to work for that community because I see that, I see that passion, a passion, a passion that I share. Because one day, I was there, like those moms, when I came to this country. But now I am in a different position helping those families. And for me, it's amazing to see the response. What is happening in P5? I almost forgot what I have to tell you. Sorry. We have, we start the Mariachi program three weeks ago, and we start the program with 200 children. That is amazing. The response is, the response from the community was amazing. And also, we have more Hispanic families joining the program this year. That made me so happy. Also, two weeks ago, we, we start the food distribution, and we all are Makinivento families, and we are helping 150 families. I can tell you more things that I have in mind, but only, I have only two minutes. And I can tell you that I am very happy to be here. I am incredible. I am grateful to be here and work with that community. Thank you so much.
And Tilsia's work is, as she described it, is really an understatement of what she's actually accomplished. So I think when we talk about family support, and we talk about community partnerships, so we're talking about bridging need with resource, right? We're talking about connection with families. We're talking about identification. And so Tilsia mentioned, you know, MKV, which is its shorthand for our families facing housing instability, right? And they have, they have rights, rules, protections, and sort of the assortment known as Makinivento. And that's one of the ways we can identify families. But as Tilsia said, you know, that it's, there are other families to be identified. And so for her to step in, it's been a very obvious, very obvious impact on our families in our school district and an infectious energy, you know, and we're all very supportive of our families in this district. But Tilsia has taken it to a new level. And I promise you, I don't know that there's been so much foot traffic through the hallways here, up to P5, our Family Resource Center. And the impacts of that connection is resources being accessed through several different programs. So the mention of the Mariachi program, we normally have 40 or 50 new applicants per year. We had 130 new applicants this year. And that's just based on the, the efforts of Tilsia and connecting with a number of our families. So I want to transition to talk about what sometimes we, we call P5, Portable 5. It's here on this campus. It's, it's back near our Alma preschool. But it's our Family Resource Center. And it's a location where a lot of the donations and the efforts of our partnerships with community, community donors, community partners, it's where it all comes to, to land and be organized and be made available. So, you know, cycling back and not in a linear way, but, you know, early on, as, as Tilsia, for instance, was connecting with families before we started sort of our formal ongoing distributions and linking of resource and need, as families were meeting with Tilsia in the room, school supplies were available from, from donorships, other resources were given to families. So there, there were a lot of families coming in and there were a lot of bags, you know, leaving with families, which is, which is really, really awesome. It's the goal. Ultimately, we have the resources there. So we're very fortunate to have this location. We have resources on hand. When we talk about supportive families and, you know, the term wraparound services is used quite a bit, what we're talking about is customized support of families based on their individual needs. So there, our families are not all in the same situation. A family facing housing instability doesn't necessarily need food resources. They might benefit more from other resources. So we're able to stock quite a few things in this room and keep them turning out to families, including food perishable and non-perishable toiletries, some clothing. We get, you know, sort of some situational donations like gift cards, which we get out to families through this location and through distribution. So it's really, it's really an awesome thing to have a space and then have awesome people in the space who are, are again, bridging need with resource. I want to highlight a few, a few key donors. We have a lot of donors. So I hope anyone watching at home or anyone in the room who's participated in donating to us is not mad if they've been left out. But I wanted to highlight a few that we really consistently depend on. One is Moms Against Poverty. We refer to as MAP. They are a fantastic organization. They provide, they provide anything we ask for, to be honest. For them, it's really not a capacity issue. It's about, it's about, you know, how much we can take on and actually guarantee when we take on perishable items. We're not designed to store it for massive lengths of time. So they provide us these, these grocery boxes and they're, it's very high quality food that we're able to provide to families. And we do that in every two weeks. So twice a month, we're, we're leading distributions to our families most at need. And they have provided other items. They've actually provided the food grocery boxes for some of our large scale distributions. So if you remember, especially around pandemic time, we had a couple of large distributions up at Canyon with 400 plus boxes of groceries going out. MAP was behind it. And they're always very supportive of us. They're, they're asking us to do more. You know, do you want a laundry facility? We'll pay for it. They paid for the fridges and the freezers and the electrical, I believe, up in P5 to be able to, to store the perishable food that we have on hand. So really fantastic. I would tell you, please check out their website to go to their fundraising dinner this month. But they're so awesome. They're, they're already sold out. So bookmark the website and look for future opportunities. Yep.
I purchased the ticket because I, they've already, I usually don't do this, but I have to say, especially in light of what's happening, this actually organization is a group of Iranian women who started it. And they do this around the world. And they will give us anything we need. So I just want to commend them for their work.
Absolutely. They are awesome. Move past really quick to talk about CV outreach, which is another donor. They focus on more seasonal donation drives. So there's going to be some information coming out soon. They, they, again, they focus on families in the community that are our most at need. They've supported us with gift cards. They support families with gifts, gift cards during, during sort of the holiday season. And we've really benefited from partnership with them. I'm not going to read through the list of additional organizations, but we do receive, you know, quite a few resources, even within our district. We've, we, you know, it's, it's interesting because we're looking, we're looking for resources to meet the need and we have some really good donors. But then we also have groups that know that the Resource Center is there. And they'll go lead grassroots there. You know, they'll say, we're going to target toiletries. We're going to target school supplies. And we've had schools within our own district, community groups just deliver things to us. It's been really, really fantastic. And, you know, there's shelves in there and we have items on them, but they're constantly being turned out. And it speaks to, you know, it speaks to the need, but it also speaks to what we feel is like a really strong committed infrastructure of passionate people who are connected with families, are inviting them in, and again, providing that tailored support. So wanted to say, ultimately, we're very thankful for those community partnerships. We're very thankful for our staff that are engaged in the process. And, you know, we're, we're committed to our families. We know that. This is one snapshot of what it looks like, not necessarily start to finish, but how staff, how resources, how need, how connection all come together to help with stability and support. So thank you so much. I probably left some things out.
Thank you, Mr. McMaster and Ms. Elaya. Questions and comments from the board? We'll start with Quentin.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to start off by just saying, wow, you know, that what you just described is absolutely incredible. And I know at the high school, we have a community closet, which is, you know, a closet that accepts clothing donations from the community. And we give those to the students. And we also have a brand new laundry facility there as well. And to hear you talk about this supersized district wide community closet, in essence, is absolutely incredible. And you really are setting a standard for, for what the high school should be implementing and setting a standard for how we should be reaching out to our community. And it's just absolutely incredible overall. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
Just want to be sure to say that there's a lot of people that make this all happen, including our leadership, support of our board, community, additional staff. So we get to present about it tonight. And we do a little bit of the work, but there's a lot of people behind it. So I'm going to make sure that thank you gets extended to everybody.
All right, Mike.
I just want to acknowledge in a community like Castor Valley, sometimes I, I think some communities are not seen. We're a relatively affluent community. And Tilsia, your efforts to connect with our Hispanic Latino community is so important. There's such a diversity within that, within that broader label. I, I appreciate that. Thank you for doing that. And whenever we have presentations like this, it's always difficult for me. It just, I always think, having, when I experienced homelessness when I was a kid, living with my mom, if only these programs had existed, how things may have been different, how different, there may have been different outcomes. And I'm grateful that I get to be here right now. Like, there's so much imposter syndrome. But there's a little kid who, whose mom you're helping, your parent, their, their parents are helping. And that's just, it's fantastic. I'm so proud of this district of what we do to help those families. So thank you.
When, when, sometimes when I call families, every day I call like three, four. And they ask me, is really, is, is not a joke? Is it a joke? No, no, it's not a joke. It's, it's really, it's really true. And sometimes they are amazed that I am calling and offer that back of toiletries or whatever it is. And they are amazing. They are amazed, amazed, amazed that, that we are offering that service, that we are calling, that we are connecting with, with that community, that they said that they, that sometimes they feel that we forget about that community. And I said, no, 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 we didn't forget. It's that, you know, we are doing the, the work. We are doing the, the, all the, the reach out, you know, but for those families to come to us. And they are coming. The, the people see those families here in the district.
You know, it's a great program. It does remind me of a program I saw down in New Haven a few years ago. And I'm really happy that here we are rivaling that program and doing great work here for the community members that we have who need it just as much as those guys do. So thanks very much for a great program.
Dolly.
Yes, I want to thank you for your support for the kids and the families in here in Castor Valley. We are generally an affluent community, but that doesn't mean that there aren't some families that are in great need. I remember years, you know, 20 some odd years ago, seeing student with holes in their shoes or food insecurity, housing insecurity, Makinivento. It's, it's really great to see us trying to help alleviate some of these issues so that kids can come to school and they can learn and they're prepared to be able to learn because they have a pair of shoes or they, you know, they have the proper PE equipment or, or whatever it is that they need. Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
We talked earlier about trying to navigate applications. We've talked about navigating things when you're new to a community and being able to provide that support and help continue to lift people up. And I just want to say, Tilsia, welcome to CV. Thank you for sharing your story. We really appreciate that. And you are just as humble as Mr. McMaster. Usually people who give tend to not think about the beauty that they're bringing into the world. And so thank you so much for the things that you're doing.
I, I do want to say thank you to Mr. McMaster because this is, this is just a very small part of his work. But it's been amazing to have Tilsia here. When we interviewed her, we just knew we had a winner. We were very excited to have her. I want to say some of the things, like you talked about New Haven. New Haven, because it's a city, the city actually contributes a lot of money to their program, which is amazing. And as an unincorporated area, we don't have that luxury. So we had to look for other means. You know, examples, I've seen so much of what happens. For example, we have, you know, we've had students who maybe weren't comfortable coming to school because they didn't have clothes that they washed. So that washer and dryer is saving their, you know, they come, they do it. And what's really important, sometimes when we get donations from organizations, it's just one piece of it. When MAP gives us refrigerators and freezers and washers and dryers everywhere, they actually pay for installation. They pay for all of the materials forever. And that's really been very helpful. But this, this kind of service, especially when we talk about, we are an, we're a pretty affluent community here, but you never know about tomorrow. And during COVID, there were families who maybe never needed any of this, who really needed it at that time. That's why it was, it's always important not to judge, not to make assumptions and reach out, as you have been doing, to make sure that we catch every single person we can. So thank you so much.
So ditto to all the things that my colleagues have said. And I want to say thank you to you, Parveen, because of course, this is the, the, the will of the board to support our whole student and to do this for our students. But you're the one who made it happen. Well, you and your staff, of course. I mean, you hire the right people, you give the right guidance and make the right connections. So all of this is possible because of the work that you've done.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And, and thank you, Mr. McMaster and Ms. Elaya, for all of your work and your connections with our community members. So grateful. All right, we will move on to approval of the personnel report.
I'll move approval of the personnel report.
I'll second it.
All right. Are there any questions? All right, Mike, your vote?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So the personnel report has been approved, five zero. Resolution 12 dash 2223.
I would move that we adopt resolution.
I would move that we adopt resolution 12-2223.
I'll second that.
All right, are there any questions? All right, Quentin, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Vice President Whitaker?
Yes.
And my vote is yes, so resolution 12-2223 has been approved 5-0. Board member comments and reports. Mike or Quentin, do you have anything else to add?
Just that, I mean, it's just so great to see all the things that our district is doing to really support the families in our district and the community as well. Like, I don't know, I've always just thought of school as, you know, a guy to get an education, got to learn. But seeing the things that we're doing to reach out and to really support our community is just, it's just so great to see. And it's just so inspiring and so, it's just so great to see that there's so many people working so hard to ensure that students and families have the support that they need and have access to the resources that they need. And I can tell you for sure, it's making a big difference. And I think I speak for all families and students when I say that. We truly are very, very grateful for everything that you guys are putting forth. So thank you.
Yeah. Attended the Castor Valley Educational Foundation. Again, it was kind of a recap of the events from the Fall Festival, where I think they did a really great job in community engagement. And they have decided on a date for spring into education, their new annual fundraising effort. It's going to be like May?
Fifth.
May 5th. That was great to be a part of that meeting. Also had the opportunity to attend the Parent Leadership Council, the PLC, where the heads of different PTAs and parents' clubs come together. And it was just wonderful to hear the solving problem, problem solving across the different schools as they implement a lot of the things that they haven't been able to do for the past two years. So it's nice to see our school communities coming back together again. Had a great time at the Palomeros Parent Teachers Club. And it was really well attended, like really well attended. I think every parent in the school may have been there and had just a fantastic conversation. And it was just delightful to be there and to hear from one parent who said how she saw her family by seeing that flag there. And that really warmed my heart to know that it's bringing support to families in our district. Two other comments. I don't think kids reveal unsafe going to school. My heart aches for Oakland tonight and Sojourner School. And I'm written for the Women of Iran. I really am. I think that, I'll just leave it with that. Thank you.
Gary.
Okay, I was at the art show that Art Inc. has at our Adobe Center. And a lot of very nice work down there, if you guys want to go visit it. Also attended with Lavender, the Hard Ad Hoc Meeting. And I think that's one reasonably well, and we'll hear more about that in the near future, hopefully. Yesterday, a number of us on the board and other organizations like the Citizens Oversight for Measure G were at the Wellness Center plaque unveiling down there. It was a very nice event, very enjoyable. But the two biggest events that I was at, the two most pleasurable events I was at this last couple of weeks, were last week. In the first one, the African-American parents of all the elementary students all got together up at Stanton and had, I would call it a picnic almost, but it was all of them together, having a lot of food and kids playing in the grass. And they just getting to know each other from all the campuses is a tremendous event. Jason was there, Nia was there, Parveen was there. Really a lot of fun, a great event. I hope they do more of them. And then I got to go right from there over to the high school where the Hispanic parents were celebrating National Hispanic Heritage Month this month. And once again, an enormous amount of really good food and nice people and just a terrific community event there. So I hope they have even more of those and I hope I get to go to them. So those are two really terrific events. And that's all I have.
Solid.
Okay, so I went to the Independent Elementary PTO meeting, a well-attended meeting, very friendly, nice parents, was really good to see them and learn more about how Independent is, really doing well. I had a regional policy board meeting that was fairly routine. I did have a visit to CVHS. I went to a number of different special ed classrooms. I also visited the, one of the rooms where they're teaching the Avid classes and got to know Principal Fortenberry a little bit better, which was really nice. And the last thing, of course, was the Wellness Center plaque, which was, I wholeheartedly support and I'm so glad that we have that Wellness Center at CVHS.
Gary's already shared what I did. I'm really looking forward to the outcome of the Hard Sub Committee. I can't wait till we can share that out. And then I did go to the CVHS Wellness Center plaque reveal. Thank you Dot for peeling it off for us. It was really great to see everyone out there and everybody that contributed and brought it to light. I mean, that is a great center. And as you've all heard tonight, we have expanded services across the district. And we're really helping people out. And that's what matters, the social and emotional wellness of our kids, that they can be healthy, happy adults, go off into the world and do great things. I do want to take a mention, I did not know that the Moms Against Poverty were Iranian women. I want to send my thoughts to them, their families, and to our Iranian families in this district. We have a diversifying community and our diversity enriches us. It makes us better. It helps our kids live in a diversifying world where, when they go out into the world, that kindness and that empathy that we can share with one another, we just, we just don't know what somebody's facing. Like we said, you know, we walk around Castor Valley and we have no idea. And the programs that we put in place through your leadership, Parveen, and your staff's leadership is really helping our students thrive. And we could all use a little bit of kindness because we just never know what's going on. So my heart goes out to our Iranian families. Here with you in solidarity. We're so sorry you're going through with what you're going through. And to all of our other families facing hardships at this time.
Thank you, Lavender. Other than the plaque unveiling, I have not represented the board since our last meeting. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting.